Okay, so it's seven oh three. I'd like to call the February twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. The appeals meeting to order. I'm assuming it's Stevens. Also present is Tom Manning, Secretary, Floyd Kravitz, who was Vice Chair. Bill Munzer. Who's an alternate, was sitting in for Mr. Fitzgerald. And Mr. Smith is be sitting in for Mr. Versano. Okay, we only have one application on the agenda this evening at the appropriate time. I will ask the Secretary to read the call opening and then determine if the mailings that are required by statute are in order. If that is all set, we're set to go. We'll ask the applicant or their representative to identify themselves, name and address. And please tell the board what variance you are seeking and why. At the end of the applicant's presentation. The board members will probably have questions. At that point, we will ask if there's anybody here to speak in favor or opposition. I know there is one letter that came with the file. We'll also determine if there were any others or any comments from any of the town agencies. So at that point, if the applicant has anything else they wish to wish to present, we'll listen. At the end of the applicant's presentation, if there are no more questions. We'll end the public hearing and go into discussion. We do have sixty five days by statute, but we usually attempt to do it the same thing. But at that point in time, nobody can speak. So anytime anybody wants to speak, it's during the public hearing portion. I think that covers if anybody has a cell phone or a noisy dog, if you'd silence the both, that would be appreciated. And with that, Mr. Manning, I think we're set to proceed. Oh, sorry, sorry. Back off. Also present this evening is Tom Zanari, most important person here. Who was the Code Enforcement Officer in front of the town. And do we have a recording section, Tom? Tom Zanari.
Lauren Toast will be doing the minutes.
Okay, so she's also present. Okay, thank you. All right, Tom Manning, we're set to proceed.
Okay, ZBA twenty one zero two, forty five Essex Street. Peter J. Springsteele, applicant Eleanor D. Wenderoth, trustee owner. Variance of section three point two dash two A to reduce the required yard. Front yard setback to ten feet, six inches from twenty five feet. To construct the front entryway or entry, entry stairway. PIN number two, six, one, eight, zero, nine, two, six, three, four, seven, five. RS twelve zoning district. And I've prior just within the past prior half hour. I've gone through the mailings. They've been found to be in order and in compliance with the mailings required. And as well as the date that they were mailed. So we're set to proceed.
Okay, Mr. Springsteele.
Good evening, Peter Springsteele, architect. Here tonight representing Eleanor and Charlie Wenderoth. Who live at forty five Essex Street. Tom, are you going to bring drawings up or do I do it on my own here?
You can do it. That way you can control what you see. You don't have to talk to me.
Okay. All right, you should all be able to see the screen. What we have here are the existing conditions of the house. It's a modest, single family home. It's located in a flood zone, a VE flood zone. You can see here is the line of the flood zone. And it splits the AE and the VE zone. This is Essex Street, which is down on Willow Point in the Mystic section of the town. And this neighborhood sits pretty low throughout its boundaries. And so this property, like many of the others down there, will flood in a hundred year flood zone event. You can see that the front of the house right here. Which includes a porch and a sort of a living room area here are both nonconforming in the front yard setback. This house has been around for a while, probably predates zoning for sure. So we're preexisting nonconforming in terms of the front yard setback. The lot is fairly good size. We meet all the regulations regarding lot coverage. We're well under the thirty percent lot coverage that's allowed. And we are proposing to add on to the back of the house a bit. As part of this application, but that's all conforming. So in order for us to proceed on this, we want to raise the house up to be more conforming with the flood zone requirements. In a VE zone, the floor system would have to be up at elevation fourteen. That's the bottom of the floor system. So the finished floor would be up at fifteen in that case, which is quite high. So the owners here decided not to comply completely with that regulation. We're going to do what's called a nonsubstantial improvement. We're going to come into further compliance by raising the house up. And taking all our mechanicals and raising those up. And then putting in flood vents in the lower portion of the building. So we are seeking some compliance with the flood regulations. So now I'm going to take you to the elevations. These are existing again. You'll note the first floor is at elevation seven foot two and AVD. That's above mean high water essentially. And we're going to be raising the house or proposing to raise the house six foot two inches. So I'll now bring up the proposed here. Okay, you should be able to see. The proposed screen here. So now in these three D views here, you can see this is the front of the house facing Essex Street. This is the area that's nonconforming in the front yard setback. When we raise the house up, we need to be able to get to the ground. So off the front, the existing front porch, we're proposing a little landing and a stairway to get us down the grade. Right now, there's just a couple of steps that take us to grade. But when we raise this up, obviously, we need more steps. So this encroachment into the front yard setback. Is about three, three and a half feet more than it encroaches today, simply because of the placement of the existing house. So the existing house front setback is here. And that front yard is thirteen foot seven. We're proposing ten foot six, and that allows us to get a wide enough stair to meet code. To be able to egress out of the front of the house. In addition, because we're raising the house up, we're increasing the nonconformity of within the setback by raising the house up. We're adding more bulk. We're not adding any new footprint beyond that stairway and landing to the nonconforming area. We are adding some space on the back here, but that all fits into the zoning regulations. And up here, you can see my floor. It's not supposed to be floor ratio. It's lot coverage. In the RS twelve zone, we're allowed thirty percent, which is thirty four, forty one square feet. Presently, we're at nineteen or we're at one thousand forty eight, and we're proposing to go up to fifteen sixty six, which is thirteen and a half percent. So we're well within the lot coverage for the lot. So really, the issue here is one of trying to come into more conformity with the FEMA regulations, which is always a goal. And in doing so, because of the preexisting nonconforming location of the house. We're having to seek relief from the zoning regulations, specifically the front yard setback. In order to meet the FEMA requirements. So essentially, that's it. It's very simple application. This is what the house looks like. There's been other houses in this neighborhood that have been raised up. So this is not anything new down there, and there'll probably be more as time goes on. So happy to answer your questions.
Okay, that looks like I've got fan attention right now. Got the drawings up on my desktop, but I can't see anybody on my iPad. So I'll walk through it. Okay, question time. Doug Smith.
Peter, just. If I, if I understood correctly, you're just going up six and a half feet. Is that it?
Six foot two inches.
Okay, and versus, you know, I ride my bikes out of that neighborhood a lot, and I know there's houses like on the corner there of. Apple, Apple Tree Lane there. They went up, went up a full fifteen, I think, didn't they?
I'm not sure.
Well, the one on the corner just went up a whole big story.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so the bottom level, there's no, there's no living space there, right? That's just storage?
Right. Right now, there's a, there's almost a full basement, and that's below grade, and it floods. It's wet all the time. So we are eliminating that below grade space. Which is another way to increase our compliance. But then this space under the, this new space under the raised house will just be for parking and storage, which is allowed by FEMA.
Right. Is that open? Is that going to be open or screened?
It'll be screened.
Okay.
These are lattice panels here. You can see through them in my drawing, but they'll be opaque. You won't be able to see through those.
All right.
That it up?
Yeah, I think I understand.
Okay, Mr. Munzer.
Yes, Mr. Springsteele, could you tell us about the different options to? We're adding a staircase to the front of the building. That, that's increasing the encroachment on the setback. Are there any other options you may have explored to accommodate that stairwell?
Well, we could maintain the same setback by putting the stairway right here. But this happens to be the driveway, the existing driveway, and that didn't seem like the right thing to do there. We do have another deck and a rear exit right here. And we felt that two exits for this house, especially when it's elevated, is an important thing to do. And this being the front of the house where people come and come to the house and see the front door. This is the front door. We felt that the stairway ought to be in this location versus obstructing the driveway here.
Could there be some safety concerns? Perhaps it's, it's best when put in the front of the building like that. It's visible from the street, the driveway. Seems to be the best solution.
Yeah, I think from a safety standpoint, it should be in the front and just as a normal, what you expect on a house, the stairway's in the front. It's the most efficient location.
If you, if you could educate me a little more on this, you, we try to strive for FEMA compliance, but, but this is a substantial improvement to the building. It will not make it FEMA compliant. Is, is there, can you explain the logic behind that or?
So, so if we were going to be completely FEMA compliant. We would be up another two or three feet from where we're proposing to be. We've worked out the numbers on doing this work and we're able to, and we've done a, we've had a appraisal done. So we have a value for the property and we have numbers to make the improvements. We found that the numbers are less than fifty percent of the value of the structure. So we're able to come in under a nonsubstantial improvement. And when that's the case, you don't have to come into full compliance with the FEMA regs. We are doing several things though that will bring it into further compliance. A, we're raising it up higher. And by the way, it will be higher than the AE zone, which is right here. It splits the house. You know, why these zones are where they are is hard to tell, especially on such a flat property like this. But A, we're raising the house up to reduce hazards to life and safety and property. Two, we're raising up all the mechanicals so that we know mechanicals below the first floor now. We're eliminating the basement below grade, which is also something that FEMA looks at as an improvement and there was one other. Oh, we're putting flood vents in the storage garage space enclosure. So all those items are improvements that FEMA likes to see happen. The only thing we're not complying with is the full height requirement. And part of that is the owners are getting older, as we all are, and you know, walking up ten, twelve feet of stairs every day just to get to your first floor is pretty onerous. So they felt that this was a reasonable compromise.
Thank you for the lesson. No more questions. Thanks.
Okay, Floyd Kravitz.
I don't have any questions, mate.
Okay, thank you. Tom Manning.
I guess in looking at the sketch, the Essex Street is the only full street that borders the property. But I see Ellery Lane. What is the nature of that? Is that a paper?
Well, maybe Charlie and Eleanor on the line, maybe they could explain the history of Ellery Lane.
Go ahead, Mr. Munzer.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. A number of years back. Ellery Lane was not part of our property. I approached the town about acquiring it legally and making it part of the property. And I was able to do that and I went to the town. So what's defined there as Ellery Lane now actually belongs to us. The rest of that road, which continues over to, is it Cold Lane over there?
Yes.
The Cold Lane, basically no man's land. I did not inquire about obtaining that. I did not want to create problems with my neighbors. I mean, it would be nice. They own it conceivably. It could be turned into a driveway, but I did not approach them with that, figuring just this area that we always park our cars in. I felt that it belonged to the property. And even though now I'm paying taxes on it, it was the right thing to do. So that's actually part of the parcel now. I had it surveyed. I think you did the initial survey. Was it just Susan Bentley? I think Larry Bentley years ago did the initial survey and then I had another gent come back. And when this plan was done and actually attached it to the property.
Okay.
I have one other comment. You were asking why we weren't going up the total fifteen feet. And part, part of that is that we didn't want to be looking down, three, three feet down on our neighbors because none of the other houses are that high. The other houses were either constructed or lifted prior to the redoing of the zoning rules and regs. So they didn't have to go up that high. And we didn't feel that we wanted to be looking down on them either. So it's partially for a visual as well.
Thank you. I have no questions. Everybody else has already asked them. Tom Manning, do we have, there's one letter that came with the package. If you'd like to read that for the record.
Sure. Yes, there's a letter from Paul Blanchett dated the seventeenth of February, two thousand twenty one. Dear Eleanor and Charlie. Please submit this email at your hearing to state that we, neighbors across the street located at thirty Essex Street, Mystic, Connecticut. Have no issues emphasized in caps and support your request for a reduced front yard setback from ten feet, six inches from twenty five feet to construct the front entry stairway. As stated on, in the two thousand, excuse me, February twelfth, twenty twenty one, letter you mailed to Paul Blanchett. Twelve Ventres Way, Burlington, Connecticut. Please let us know if you have any questions. Wamus regards and good wishes, Sarah and Paul. That's the only letter that I see in the package.
Yeah, anything from planning?
Came from Paul Blanchett, who's a neighbor across the street.
There is a one letter from planning. Stick it up here. It's right here. And they have no, no comment on the application.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, Mr. Springsteele or Mr. Wenderoth?
Sorry, one more. There's, there was one person, Katie Corpey, that's in the attendee. I don't know if she has anything to say. We'll ask her if she wants to say anything.
Mrs. Corpey?
Katie, you can.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Katie.
Yes, I'm a neighbor. I live at one oh nine Essex Street. And I have no objections. I'm, I'm fully behind the Wenderoths what they like to do.
Thank you. Anybody else out there, Tom?
Nope, that's it.
That's it. Okay, Peter Springsteele or the Wenderoths, do you have anything else to add?
I do not. I think we're all set.
Okay, board members have any other questions? Here we go. We'll call the public hearing. It'll close at seven twenty five. Okay, let's push the discussion. Tom Manning, going to start off.
Okay, I happened to look at and looked at the card that was part of the packet. And the building was built, or the, the structure was built, it looked like in nineteen hundred. I think that's what I remember seeing. So clearly it predates zoning and I think my feeling is, and I know we'll get into this in the discussion part. But they're trying to comply and stay in their location that they've been in for quite some time, I presume. And this is just a compromise. And I have no problem. The house was situated as it stands. I was curious on Ellery Lane, the history, and the reason I asked the question, I didn't know if the building fronted on two streets at one time, and it might have. But, or that, that might have just been a paper street that the town never used. So that was part of my curiosity. But essentially, I, I have no, no problem with or any adverse comments to make.
Okay, Floyd Kravitz.
I have no more questions.
Your comments on the application. We're in the discussion now. So any comments you want to make?
No.
Okay, Doug Smith.
Yeah, I've been by that house many times and in that neighborhood, I've, I've seen houses being raised. Quite a few of them further back are raised. And I believe this is a reasonable compromise to try to be, bring the house into some lesser noncompliance with FEMA. And also that the way it's situated, that this front stairway is necessary to carry out that purpose. So I would vote, I'm going to intend to vote in for it, actually.
Okay, Mr. Munzer.
Yeah, it certainly preexists zoning. And so I think Doug and Tom have eloquently phrased our arguments and I would support the application as presented.
Okay, who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the application as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Munzer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Floyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The no abstentions of the variances granted unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're set to move on. Correspondence, Tom Zanari. Tom Zanari.
Sorry, I was on mute there. There is no correspondence.
Okay, all right. Next, here's the minutes from January twenty seventh. If it's already stuck the mobile, summary of motion.
I will get, we accept the minutes.
Brooke, could I make a comment before? Because I, I have something I'd like to add to the, to the.
Doug, Doug was making a motion. Somebody was second. It will get discussed.
Okay, go ahead. Actually, it has to do with the draft of the minutes of the meeting for the twenty seventh of January.
Okay.
Do you want, you want me to explain what my comments would be?
I think Doug made a motion to accept. Does somebody second that? Somebody second?
I second.
Okay, thanks Floyd. Okay, now, Tom.
Well, what I'd like to have, what, I don't know, what I was trying to get in was there was a stipulated judgment that was discussed relative to, and we're talking about the minutes of the meeting that had to do with the stipulated agreement. And paragraph three, if I'm reading, if I'm not jumping ahead of myself. Paragraph three says, "The parties agree that nothing herein shall be deemed as an admission as to the issues of fact or law in the decision reached by the defendant ZBA. And as simply officiating, affixating, rather, the settlement reached to end litigation." The defendant ZBA specifically specifically denies any illegality and enters into the stipulation only for the reason that the party who sought and obtained the variance has expressed no further interest in it and desires to abandon the judicial process. Nothing herein is meant to limit, impair, or affect the authority of the defendant ZBA to grant or deny variances or to exercise any authority provided it by the statute regulation a law. That to me was the convincing reason that I voted to go along with this. And I think I would like to see somewhere in the minutes. Some, it doesn't have to be a long verbal discussion that I just gave, but something that documents that it is because of paragraph three of the stipulated judgment that the board, maybe you don't know, maybe the rest of the board doesn't agree with me. But I wouldn't have voted for it if that hadn't been as I wrote or as I read. So that's my comment.
That was that was a statement that was made at the meeting, as I said.
What's that?
Is that, it was a statement nature that affair, wasn't it, right?
That, that, what I read was part of the stipulated judgment that was part of the minutes of the meeting, I think. Tom Zanari, can you? stipulated judgment that was part of the minutes of the meeting, I think. Tom Zanari, can you jump in? That was part of what was presented to us
Yep.
when we voted.
It was.
And
Correct.
all I'm saying is I, I think we should highlight, and I would like to see in our minutes, not, not just saying we, you know, simply I'd like to see that we at least highlight and emphasize the reason why we were comfortable in voting and it's paragraph three of the stipulated judgment.
I think that was well discussed during the meeting.
Okay, well, if everybody else is comfortable, then that's fine, but if somebody's reading the, reading our minutes, this, when I read the minutes, that was a telltale, and it's not being flagged at all as to why people, I wouldn't have voted for it otherwise if that hadn't been in there. So that's, that's why I think it's an important factor. And you could simply say, you could simply say, emphasis on paragraph three of the stipulated judgment, that would, that would probably be sufficient for me to approve. Otherwise, I'll probably just say I don't agree with the minutes.
Tom Zanari, any possibility that that statement could be added into the and this was thought a part of it?
Yeah, I mean, it should, if it wasn't pointed out during the meeting, I don't, retroactively, I don't know if you want to make something happen that didn't happen. I mean, it was covered
Well, no, no, it was.
Yeah.
I think it, I think it was. We read this, didn't we, at the last meeting? At that meeting, when this came up?
Mm-hmm.
So we read that. Yeah, but, but we read it. We and I'm, all I'm saying is, is that that was a key thing, I think, for the board, for the ZBA to agree with what we did, and that was to, to agree to cancel the the variance. I think. Because that's how I run that.
Ed? Tom Zanari, what are your thoughts? What are your thoughts?
Can I jump in here for a second?
All right.
Go ahead, Doug.
I want to hear what Doug has to say.
I was in the, I was a voter on that, and it seems to me that the minutes, they speak about the stipulated judgment that was entered into the record. I don't think I, I can't say that that was the thing that, the total thing that convinced me to vote for it, but it may have been one or more of the other members, but the fact remains, the board as a whole voted to approve the, the settlement of the case and in accordance with that stipulation. So essentially, when we voted on it, we approved that stipulation, and that, that, you know, you can infer that that was what caused the board to approve it. If someone comes back to look at the minutes, is this?
Well, there'd be a whole file on
Yeah, there's a whole file, and that has no real precedential value. You know, that, it's just that one case that was, that was the settlement of the parties, and we agreed that we would step back from the case and let the attorney settle it, that's all.
I'm just bringing it up just to, because, to flight it. If somebody's reading the minutes, then I, these minutes today, there's nothing. It just says that we approved it. And people aren't, you know, I think it was significant, and I think because, and Tom Zanari might confirm, but I think I asked the question of him before the meeting. You know, I felt very uncomfortable with the, you know, when we make a decision, we're subject to certainly, and we have been sued in the past for our decisions, and it's all per stature, certain number of days they have to, to file it, you know, have to be filed. But I just feel a little bit uncomfortable if somebody's reading the minutes and doesn't go back to the
If it gets to that point, the minutes aren't going to matter, because the minutes are only state what they state. If someone's going to take this to court, there's going to be transcripts, and there's going to be recordings. Judges are never going to listen to that, and that's what stands. And like Doug said, there is a whole host of reasons why different members voted why they did. So, I mean, the fact that you voted for the stipulation means you accepted all those, so.
All I'm saying, yeah, I, I don't want to belabor this, but I felt so strongly that that was, and I was glad to see that was in there, because otherwise, it stated exactly my feeling. And I just wanted to, for emphasis as to the importance of that as far as from what our function is, the zoning mode of appeal. But if others don't feel that that's necessary, then.
Well, Tom, the only saving grace is it, it just said to allow, the motion was to allow the town attorneys to settle the case in court with the stipulation. So if someone were reading the media minutes, and they were curious, they could ask for the file.
Yeah, I guess.
And those stipulations would, would be in that file, so.
Well, the other thing, Ed, is the only interested parties are the ones that stipulated the agreement, so they, they, you know, they've already admitted that, that this is what they want, so there's no, they got, once they admit that in court, they can't come, turn around and come back and try to turn it around again.
Well, yeah, I, I guess, you know, I don't want to belabor this thing, but I, I mean, I feel, felt that that paragraph three was the whole meat and potatoes of you know, what we stand for, that we were not, but anyway, I said my piece, we, we don't, I think everybody wants to move along and get
So I believe, I believe Doug made the motion, and I believe Floyd second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of receiving minutes, say if you might say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Carried unanimously? Okay, old business. Tom Zanari?
Now there is no old business?
How about new?
No new business?
No, that application on Casino Road, no?
Casino Road will be on the March 10th agenda.
That's the next meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that will, okay. All right, staff report?
I have none.
As the members have any questions of Mr. Zanari? There are none. Motion adjourned?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I adjourned at 7:41. Thank you all.
Okay, thanks.
Good night, everyone. Take care. Good night.